...America and to the Republic of Georgia. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. America.
Fire evacuation announcement. In case we have to evacuate this chamber, there are two exits. One in front of me to your rear. Go down the stairs, out the double doors to the parking, to the grassy area. The other one to my left, your right. Go through the double doors, take an immediate left, go down the stairs and out into the parking lot. Our next item on the agenda is to have the oath of office to the new board members. Our town clerk, Mrs. Zolinski.
The members will please stand. Congratulations to Walt.
Thank you.
And if you'll please raise your right hand. David Boulay, Vincent Grady, Peter Genitis, Tina LeBlanc, Timothy F. Neville, Tom Sarard, Stacy Thurston, Lori Ungeyer, and David Waller. Do you all solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as a member of the Board of Education for the Town of Enfield to the best of your ability upon penalty of perjury or so help you God.
I do.
Congratulations again.
Thank you Suzanne.
Best wishes to you.
Kathy, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Genitis?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mr. Waller?
Here.
Mr. Grady?
Here.
Mr. Neville?
Here.
Mr. Sarard?
Here.
Mrs. Thurston?
Here.
Mrs. Ungeyer?
Here.
Mr. Boulay?
Here.
Moving on to item five, the election of officers.
Mr. Chairman?
We're not there yet.
Sorry.
Jumped the gun there, Vinnie. The next item is election of officers. I'm going to be just coordinating the election of the board chair. After that person is voted on and affirmed, then I will turn it over, the gavel, to the next chair. In terms of the process, basically, we're going to, I'm going to ask you to raise your hand if you want to make a nomination. And then if you, during that nomination, if you want to say a few brief comments about your reasons for the nomination, that's fine. Then I'm going to ask for a second. And depending on the number of nominations, I'll go through that same process each time. Once there are no more nominations, I'll ask if there are nominations several times. If not, I'll close the nominations and then I'll turn it over to Mrs. Zaliki to do a roll call vote. When she calls your name, we'd like you to do is just say the name of the person you're voting for. Okay? Very good. At this point, anybody who would like to make a nomination for chairman of the board, please raise your hand.
Mr. Chairman?
I have Vinnie first and I have Mr. Boulay. David, I'm sorry. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I would take this honor and privilege to nominate Tom Sarard for chairman of the board. I've known Tom for, working on the board for the last few years now, and I think he would make an excellent chairman. He's worked well, very well with us in the past, and I do believe that he will do a great job in being chairman of the board and guiding us into another two years on this term.
Is there a second?
I'd like to second.
Second is, may I, Lori Ungeyer? Okay. And Mr. Boulay, do you have a nomination, please? For chairman of the board?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to nominate Peter Genitis. My dealings with him have shown that I believe he has the best interests of the students of Enfield at heart. He was invaluable in his guidance during the campaign to especially us, us new people, and for that reason, I think he'd make a great board chairman.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Waller. Are there any other nominations? Any others?
Make a motion to close nominations. Sorry.
There are no, there are no other things. We'll just, we'll just close the nominations. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Zaliki for a roll call vote. Please make sure you say the name of the person you're voting for and also make sure you push the button here so we get on the record. Thank you.
This is for a roll call vote for Tom Sarard as chairman.
It's actually for both, right? Isn't that the way we did it before?
No, you do a singular.
We do a singular?
Singular.
Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Genitis?
Which one's going first?
I'm doing the vote for Tom Sarard first.
No.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
No.
Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mr. Sarard?
Yes.
Mrs. Thurston?
Yes.
Mrs. Ungeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Boulay?
No.
Tom Sarard has...
How many votes?
One, two, three, four, five, six. Yes votes for Tom Sarard and three no votes for Tom Sarard.
Based on that, I believe we have a chairman. Congratulations. Thank you, sir.
Nervous. I believe that we opened the nominations for the vice chairman. Do I have a motion to open nominations?
Motion?
Do I have a second?
A second for what?
We actually, we actually don't need a motion to do that. We're just opening the nominations.
Opening the nominations for vice chairman. Do we have anyone nominating for vice chairman? I'd like to nominate David Waller.
I'll second that.
Do we have any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations? Do I have a motion to close nominations?
Motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Nomination to close. Mrs. Zaliki?
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mrs. Thurston?
Yes.
Mrs. Ungeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Boulay?
Yes.
Chairman Sarard?
Yes.
That's nine votes for David Waller.
We open nominations for secretary. Do we have any nominations for secretary? Tina?
I would like to nominate Vinnie Grady for secretary. He has had many years of service on the Board of Ed and most recently, he had a leadership role, and I would like to continue to see him in a leadership role.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thurston. Any further nominations for secretary? Any further nominations? Do we have a motion to close nominations?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Zaliki, roll call, please.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mrs. Thurston?
Yes.
Mrs. Ungeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Boulay?
Yes.
Chairman Sarard?
Yes.
That's nine votes.
Congratulations, Mr. Grady.
Thank you.
Continuing with a long Board of Education tradition, we were going to be having what we call the Service Recognition Awards to our outgoing board members. Mr. Feely contacted me this afternoon because he is currently in New Jersey and unfortunately will not be here. I have a dictated message from him to read to you on his behalf. We'd like to start with Ms. Suzak.
Donna, in recognition of all your hard service here with the Board of Education, I can tell
you as your friend that I will miss you dearly. We have you.
Right around behind you.
Amy?
Just trying to help out.
Thank you, thank you for all of your hard work. I know that you work very hard. It was a pleasure serving with you, and I wish you very well in all your future endeavors.
I guess I'd like to say thank you to everyone for supporting me, for listening to my ideas and allowing me to vent and in some cases, being a part of as we move forward in changing Enfield Public School System into a 21st century school. And Tom, I'm going to miss Tom the best, the most. Tom's my, I don't know, he's my, first term, he was my right side, second term, he was my left side. When Tom's next to me, I always say my blood pressure drops, you know, 20 points, and I can say the things that come into my mind, and Tom kind of puts a spin on them that maybe makes a little bit of sense. But I want to thank everybody here. Joyce, she'll be coming up. Joyce is somebody that I can call a friend after all the things we've been through. And everybody I've known for a long time and worked with in the school system and on the Board of Education. And I'm talking too much, so I'm going to leave now.
Congratulations.
Ms. Rannicourt?
Good morning.
Thank you.
Jen, it's been a distinct pleasure to serve with you on the Board of Education. I know you work very hard, you are very passionate in your beliefs.
I hear you.
So Jen, it's been a distinct pleasure to work with you on the Board of Education this past term. You've always been very passionate beliefs in, in your beliefs, and I honestly feel that you are constantly looking out for the best interests of our students and our teachers and our taxpayers. So I'm going to miss you because I think I would like you very much. You always spoke your mind and I always respected you for that. Recognition of your service. Here you go.
I just want to say thank you to all my friends and family, especially because they had to put up with a lot of late nights when I wasn't home. And my boys are excited that tonight's my last meeting. And I just want to thank you. I have so many friends on the board, people that I talk to every single day, and I'm going to miss them a real lot. Thanks.
Ms. Hall?
Yes, yes, yes. I have a long list of things to say.
Joyce, you will be missed.
I have a long, yes.
Joyce, your, your level of knowledge about our, our school system and what's going on at the state level was always incredible. I always, you always had my respect for that, and you had the respect of every board member that has ever sat here for that. I've grown to like you as a person, I've grown to like you as a friend, and I've always respected you for those, that level of knowledge. In recognition for all of your service, your many, many years of service here on the Board of Education, I'd like to present these to you.
Thank you very much.
And will you grace us one more time?
Very much.
With something that you are so very well-known for.
I will. It's only an hour.
We have a lot to be impressed about what we've done by the Board of Education. Things like youth vote, not every town has it. The search for additional dollars for technology, which I believe the governor at the Cabe Conference announced that he was actually filling all of the requests, which means we've got $100,000 coming for technology. Full-day kindergarten, something I have been advocating for since I first got on the board. We tried to do it once and didn't, weren't able to keep it up. Something I just learned about this past week, an AP honor roll, which makes us stand out in-state for having the biggest increase in the number of students taking the AP courses that we offer, and also scoring at one of those wonderful levels which provide them with the potential for getting credit for college work. Very impressive. Our first readers program in this town is wonderful, and I want to let all of the other towns in Connecticut and maybe the states and the nation learn about it because making reading important and honorable, medal is wonderful, is important. And it makes reading more than just something you learn in school. It's something you learn, you're able to do, and you can spend your life learning as a result. And adding something that sounded strange when we first had about, heard about it, Lego toys in school as part of the curriculum? Yes, that's what we have, currently in four grades, soon to be all five of our elementary grades. Fabulous. But to get on to the serious things that the new board is going to have to be worried about, the first primary goal for this Board of Education and any other is student achievement. Whether you're building a budget, reviewing curriculum, another one of your chores, or especially recognizing academic achievement. The new members, there is a significant learning curve to being a board member. At an earlier turnover of people leaving the board and going on to other things, one member said, and I believe it's absolutely true, and the rest of you may wonder how you're ever going to get through the next two years, it takes a minimum of two years to learn what your job really is. So if you have the opportunity and the time, and it's really essential, so you ought to make it, there are training programs run by Cabe and others, actually, and it's a, which will give you at least the keynotes of what you need to know to be a board member, which includes legal requirements, not simply sitting here twice a month and making good, of course, decisions. And if, when you get to budget, which I've already mentioned, you start thinking about how expensive teachers are, I'll bring you back to technology again. Teachers are the operating system of a classroom. So keep that in mind whenever you're thinking about the fact that teachers are not inexpensive. They are essential and should be an important lasting part of your curriculum and of your And lastly, don't be too hasty to make decisions. Think about it first. Review not only what you have thought about, but what's being done elsewhere. And don't jump to the conclusion that Common Core is the worst thing in the world. It may have some failings, but so does every other program we've ever tried to install. So give it a chance and make it worthwhile because our kids need a consistent curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. All the rest of you.
Thank you. Thanks for everything.
Welcome back, Thurston. Thank you.
Okay.
And then, Jen, Peter, I don't want to forget you. Peter, remember, we actually... A wonderful...
Lastly, we have recognition for Mr. Kevin Feely. Mr. Kevin Feely is currently in New Jersey on business, and earlier this afternoon, he called me and I took a dictation from him to convey his messages, his, well, his feelings towards the board. I regret that I am unable to be there to say good luck to the incoming board. It is my sincerest wish that you all work together for the betterment of our schools and our children. I have served the board to the best of my ability, and it has been an honor to do so. I came in as a concerned parent and leave with a greater understanding of our system of education. Thank you for all of your support that all of you have given me over the past two years. Respectfully submitted, Kevin Feely. Thank you to all of those who have served the Board of Education. Donna, Joyce, Jen, Kevin, you will all be truly missed, and your service will always be remembered, at least by me.
Can you do this?
Yes. In recognition of Chairman, former Chairman Neville's service to the board, I present Tim with his director's gavel.
Thank you.
Which he has held in his hands to chair the meetings for the past two years. Mr. Neville, I think you did a wonderful job while you were chairman. You had some rough edges here and there, but we all do as we're trying to learn our jobs, as Joyce so eloquently put. You have earned my respect, and hopefully, I have earned yours.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Just to make, just a couple of comments. One, I, I think as Joyce did articulately state, it's, it's a learning experience as we go through here, and we learn from each other, and we learn to listen to each other. Hopefully, as we get along, we, we learn to listen a lot more to each other. I can honestly say, I think this board worked well together. I think it grew together, and I think it ended up working well together. The fact that we were able to accomplish some things like all-day kindergarten and some of the goals that we had, and did a transition between two different administrations, that, that was a very, very big thing. And the fact that we actually lost most of the previous administration, they retired, and we did a wholesale replenishing of our, our administration, I think was a chore that the, the board accomplished very, very well. I would be kind of naive to say that anything that was accomplished here was my own. It wasn't. Whatever happened here is a result of us working together, and I'm hoping that we can continue with the new board to do the same. So thank you all very much for working with me, for your support. I have a great deal of respect for all of you, to all of you that are leaving. Thank you very much for your, your, your help as we've gone along, as we've grown in our positions. Thank you.
I want to begin by thanking my wife, Amy, and my family for supporting me for so long to do this on the Board of Education. Without her support, I couldn't do this. I want to thank those who have had the faith in me to vote me in as their chairperson. I hope to continue to earn your respect. I hope to continue to work hard for all of you. I understand that it is an important thing that we all reach the same goal together, and there is much that we have in common. It's the things that separate us that usually cause those issues. Yet, however, those issues aren't that many. We all serve for the same reasons. We all care about the schools. We all care about our children, and we all try to do what's best for Enfield. And all of you need to be commended for that, and none of you should ever forget that. It's about Enfield. Again, I thank you for your support. I thank my friends for their support, and I thank the voters for their support. And again, it's never been about me. It's always been about what's best for Enfield, and I will try my very best, my abject best, as I always have in these, in these seats, to earn and continue to earn that respect. So thank you. Comments from newly elected board members? Mr. Genitis?
Well, first, I'd like to thank all the people who worked on the campaigns, both Republicans and Democrats. It can be very time-consuming, and I would suspect all the candidates on both sides, thank you. One fact when it comes to the Board of Education election is that of the 10 candidates who ran, we were only separated by 105 votes. That is not a clear mandate. In fact, it's probably close to a statistical dead heat. I'd like to thank all the voters who came out and exercised their right to vote, and even though the vote was close, we on the Republican side are very appreciative for the honor to try to bring back some fiscal responsibility to the Board of Ed. I had two speeches written out, and I'm going to say neither one, I'll just say congratulations, Tom, and good luck.
I would like to welcome Lori and David Boulay and David Waller to the board. It feels great that I'm not a newbie this time, that I kind of know what to expect here. I'm glad I get to continue along with the board members that I worked on for, with for two years. I would also like to thank the voters of Enfield. Two years ago when I ran, I was the lowest vote getter for the Democrats, and I wanted nothing more to show people that I was worth their vote, and I would work very hard for everyone in Enfield. Today, I got a lot of phone calls and a lot of people reaching out to me because there were some things that they really weren't sure about what they were seeing. So I wrote something today, and if you're friends with me on Facebook, you've seen it, and if you're not, I'd like to read it to you and share. Tonight is a swearing-in ceremony for the BOE. There have been many untruths that have been out, put out on various Facebook pages. Thank you, anyone who took the time to reach out to me today to ask my opinion, advice, or just offer support. Tonight, I will be voting from the heart, not politically. I will be voting for the person who I believe can help continue to lead the school district in a forward motion. I will actually be voting for the person who didn't offer me a deal. It makes me sad that we, as elected officials and parents, should be leading by example, and what it comes out looking like is backdoor deals and lies. All that really matters to me are the students and families in Enfield. For two years, I voted with my heart, my morals, and my conscience, and there will be nothing different about my vote tonight. Thank you to everyone who supported me the last two years, and I hope I continue to represent you in a way you can be proud of for the next two. Thank you.
This is a strange new experience for me. I'll be brief. I have to thank, first of all, a couple of individuals who have let me invest time to help better the Town of Enfield for the past seven years. I'm speaking with my wife, Patty, and then, and of course, my daughter, Kelly. It's not easy, as, as many know to invest time in the town, and all you typically get is, why did you do that? I, I think I've been on the receiving end of a lot of interesting comments and emails in the past few years, but what I pledge to everyone, the public, the parents, the students, the administration, the staff of the school system, is that I will work diligently to be sure that we produce the best quality programs that we can for our students, that we work together in consensus to, for the betterment of the students and their parents, and that we think first of the children of Enfield and not ourselves. Thank you.
Mr. Grady?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to thank my wife and my children that stood behind me in this last election, and I had one of my daughters ask me, why are you running again even though we're not in the school system anymore? I think it brings back what Tina was saying, that you, you vote with your heart, you vote for what is, is good for the school system. Even though I don't have children in the school system anymore, I still believe in the Enfield Public Schools. I also like to thank Joyce, Jen, Donna, and Kevin. It's been a pleasure and an honor working with you the last two years. I wish you guys stayed. It was, it was a opportune time to get things, some, some things passed and something that was good for, for the Enfield Public Schools. I'm also looking forward to these next two years and working with the new members on the, on the board. I think we have a great board up here, and I really do think that we're going to work well together. And I'm grateful for the opportunity from the voters, and, and thank you. But I'm looking forward to the next two years. Thanks.
I'll try to be brief as well. I think there's going to be some redundancy in our comments here, but I have, I have really two thank yous and one comment. First of all, I think we've all thanked the voters. We're only here because you folks supported us and believed in us. You've given me a second chance here, and I, I appreciate the support for all the efforts that I've done. I've tried to be collaborative, I've tried to work with folks, and I understand the reason that we're here, and it's for the, for the children of Enfield and their families, to give them the best possible education we can, we can get for them. I'm committed to working collaborative with our new people. I think that's a secret to success for any board, and, and, you know, I don't see Dems and Republicans. I see people here with a common purpose, and that's what I'm looking for. And I hope that I can live up to your expectations for putting me in office. Secondly, I need to thank my incredibly patient wife for supporting me in my election and service on the board. Those of you that know her know that this certainly was not what she thought my retirement...
Those of you that know her know that this certainly was not what she thought my retirement was going to be, okay? And certainly not for another two years as well. But I think all of you have spoken to the fact that none of us could serve the town of Enfield, no matter what, unless we had the support of our families and friends, the folks who helped get us elected, the folks who were patient with us as we were out all kinds of nights and sometimes weekends doing things and going to activities and so on, which are all very, very important, but it takes some patience on the home front and support there to do it. So Sue always claims, "I never do anything in public for her," I say, "I love you Sue and thank you for your support." You tell her that, Jen, okay? And finally, we all ran because we love Enfield. We didn't run for personal glory, there's no money in this as you all know, a lot of late nights as Jen can tell you and your kids and your family could upset you. We're here because we care about this town, every single one of us. There is no reason to do this unless we did care about this town. And we want to together ensure that it has a quality school system, which I think is one of the most important responsibilities of a town, is to provide a quality education for their kids. We want them to be prepared for everything that lies ahead, not just for today, but for that 21st century high school that we're building down the street here. We know it takes work, but more importantly, it takes a high level of collaboration to make it work. I said before, it's not about politics, it's about working towards some common measurable goals that will have our kids, as Joyce said, we have to concentrate on achievement. We need to, we need to boost the achievement of our kids and make sure that they reach the best that they can through the education we provide them. So I know it, I know it takes a lot of work, I know it takes a lot of time, but I just encourage all of you, the new people especially, work together with us these next two years. Ask questions when you don't understand. Joyce wasn't lying when she said it takes at least two years to learn this job, okay? But ask us, we have an important job ahead of us and I think if we do that, we can deliver a quality education to all the parents and all the children of Enfield. Thank you very much.
Ms. Thurston?
Judy, it feels good to be back here. Just like everybody said, you know, thank you to the voters. And definitely I need another a thank you because taking the two years off, I wasn't sure, you know, how everybody would, you know, feel about me coming back, but thank you very much. And I have to say thank you to my husband who is in Toronto and I guess having a good time even though he said he's working. I tried to get him last night and...
Is he the mayor?
Oh God, I hope not. Oh boy, okay, moving along. But thank you and I'm looking forward to working with the board again and I think we're gonna do a great job and Judy, can I call you if I need you? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank my family, my husband John, my two sons, John and Joshua, my daughter-in-law Sarah. They've all been a great support to me. I also want to thank our ERTC for all their kind comments and helping me out along the way. I would especially like to point out Mary Ann Turner and Dave Warwer, but especially I'd like to thank Peter Genitis for all his instruction and he's really helped me a lot along this whole process, so I'm very grateful, Peter, thank you very much. I'd also like to thank the town of Enfield for all the voters and I've met some great people in this town that I never met before and I want Enfield to continue to be a great place to raise our families and get a good education and I really look forward to working with this great board up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I want to start by being the ninth person to thank all the voters. I guess we saved, can I say we saved the best for last? No? Can I say that? All right. I also want to thank my wife Liz and my two boys Camden and Owen for signing on for, I guess, me not being home a lot, from what I hear. I'd also like to say to the folks that are actually leaving the board this evening, I think I speak for all the new members here that we don't presume to be able to fill your shoes by any means, but we will certainly do our best to create shoes of our own to fill once we're in that seat. So thank you very much.
I also want to thank our Enfield High School representative Christine for showing up for the meeting. Do you have anything you'd like to ask? Let's talk. Now here's a favorite thing we all like to hear, "Do I have a motion to adjourn?" A motion made by Mr. Grady, seconded by Ms. Thurston. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
Good job.
Thank you, sir.